Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome John Solomon, Secretary of Agriculture Tom Vilsack, and the Vice President of the United States, Joe Biden.
Good morning. On behalf of the administration, faculty, staff, and especially my fellow students, it is indeed an honor to welcome Vice President Biden and Secretary Vilsack to Ames, Iowa, Iowa State University, and the College of Engineering. We are excited by the interest the Vice President has shown in the work we are doing to advance American manufacturing, and we hope he enjoyed his tour. I am confident it gave him a taste of the innovative research that is being conducted by our students in the College of Engineering and in other programs here on campus. I chose to study engineering at Iowa State University for its strong reputation in providing a well-rounded education and countless opportunities to get involved. I began my adventure at Iowa State four years ago. It was obvious that the university is dedicated to creating an environment that helps me and other students succeed. This is illustrated by the faculty's passion for research and teaching, our top-notch facilities, and the level of student involvement in all facets of university life. To highlight some of my experiences through ISU's programs, I was able to perform research at a Department of Energy National Laboratory, participate for four years in a biomaterials research group, complete a summer internship, have numerous opportunities to grow and develop as a leader, and even meet our very own 2011 Nobel Prize winner. I will graduate in May and move on to full-time employment in the local manufacturing sector. It is important that I do not forget to reflect upon my time here in Ames. Iowa State has prepared me to be a critical thinker, a change agent, and a global leader as I begin the next chapter of my adventure. It is now my honor to introduce someone who has been a longtime supporter of Iowa State University and who has championed the cause of higher education in the state of Iowa when he was governor. Please welcome Secretary of Agriculture Tom Vilsack.
Thanks, folks. Thank you. Thank you. You know why John was so articulate? Because he is a senior at Iowa State and he already has his employment lined up at Caterpillar, and we are proud of him and proud of the work he's doing. And that's the story of success that we see at Iowa State. And speaking of success, today is March 1st, and I know that Coach Hoiberg doesn't like to talk about March Madness, but I can talk about it. How many people in this audience believe we're headed to the tournament? Well, I believe that as well, and that's because sports and academics here at Iowa State has a formula for success. And that's what we're here to talk about today is the American formula for success. You know, the president has shaped this in a very easy way to understand. He's worked with the Vice President, and it goes something like this. We're going to obviously be a government over time that will spend less. We've got to get our fiscal house in order, but we're going to continue to invest the resources we have wisely into education, making it easier for young people to access higher education at great universities like Iowa State. We're going to continue to invest in research because we know that that's the secret to innovation. And as a result of the great innovations that's taking place on this campus and across the United States of America, we're going to be able to make and create again in this country. And when you make and create, you create an economy that puts people to work. You create new and good-paying jobs, and the rest of the world begins to take notice. And then you become a nation that once again exports your expertise and your knowledge and your products and your services. And that helps to create wealth and helps to create a strong middle class. That's the formula for success that we're operating under in this administration. And Mr. Vice President, I will tell you that agriculture is a proof point for this formula. You know, think about Craig Lang back in the eighties, the difficulties that farmers had. They reduced their debt. They began to invest in new technologies and new machinery. They became the most productive in the world. In fact, agriculture, Mr. Vice President, was the second most productive aspect of our economy since 1980. We saw huge increases in productivity, and the result of that is that we're finding creative ways to use our products, from biofuels to bio-based products, but also exporting in record amounts. And that's helped to create a record amount of farm income that we experienced last year and a record amount of agricultural exports in the last year. So it's been a bright spot in the economy, and it's a proof point for the formula. My primary focus today, though, is not to focus on my job as the Secretary of Agriculture or to promote the people that I have just profound confidence in, and that is the farmers and ranchers and producers. It's to introduce the Vice President. You know, there are many ways I could introduce Vice President Biden. I could obviously tell you about his extraordinary career as a senator, where he chaired a number of committees, including the Judiciary Committee and the Foreign Relations Committee, and did admirable work, and as a result, got the attention of then-Senator Obama, who asked Vice President Biden in 2008 to be his teammate, his running mate. I've had the extraordinary opportunity and privilege of watching Vice President Biden in a number of different settings. In cabinet meetings, when the president turns to the Vice President for advice, he has chaired a number of task forces that are critical to the future of this country, the middle-class task force. He oversaw the Recovery Act. He's now working on greater efficiencies and avoiding waste in government. But what I know about Joe Biden is this. He's extraordinarily dedicated husband, a proud father, and an extraordinarily proud grandfather. He is a man of deep faith. He is also a man that has a great pride in the past that America has written. He is very optimistic about the present of America, and he is extraordinarily focused and optimistic and hopeful about America's promise, the future. He believes, as I think we all do, that as good as today is in America, tomorrow will be even better. And that is the concept and the value that has made this country great. It's made it unique. It's made it special. Ladies and gentlemen, we are blessed to have a man as dedicated and as concerned about this country's future as Joe Biden, as our Vice President. He is a friend of Iowa, and he is a friend of mine. Ladies and gentlemen, the Vice President of the United States. Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Please. Please have a seat, and please don't jump. It's an honor to be here. I want to thank John for introducing the secretary and being such an admirable and proud product of this great university. By the way, I think you are going -- I think you are going to the tournament, and I'm all for you till you hit Syracuse. I graduated from Syracuse University, so I hope you'll -- I know politicians aren't supposed to say who they're for, especially in a place where everyone else is for another team. I'm all, as they say in Southern Ireland, "I'm for you all till you hit Syracuse." And you got one heck of a team. I also want to thank Tom. It is not hyperbole to suggest that Tom Vilsack has been the best Secretary of Agriculture in the last 50 years. This is a guy. Tom and I have worked together on a lot of projects that I've been assigned. I don't think it's fair. I know it's fair to say I have convened probably five times as many cabinet meetings as the president has. And I've watched Tom. I watched Tom, and his enthusiasm and his work ethic is infective. It really -- and he crossed pollinates in a way you can't imagine. He's the guy that came up and combined with the Department of Housing and Urban Affairs. He made sure that they work together. The Department of Transportation. This guy was a great governor. And one of the things I've found when great governors take on administrative roles in administrations that are gigantic agencies, they do the best, and no one's done it better than Tom. I also want to say thank you to the president of this great university. I want to point out that Stephen, though, is a proud product of my alma mater, the University of Delaware. I just want you to know that. I know you think everything starts in Iowa, and I know it does. I know it does. I understand. I've been around long enough to know. But Stephen, congratulations in being made president of a great, great university. I also -- I'm told that -- I'm not told that Mayor Campbell is here, the mayor of Ames. Mayor, are you here? Is Ann here? Thank you for taking the time to be here and also understand Frank, the mayor. Frank, Mayor de Maurey is here, and it's nice to see you. And thanks for taking my calls. I appreciate it very much. No, for real. For real, because we've worked on a lot of things together. And I also want to introduce you two, and I don't know where he is, but Alan Krueger. He's the chairman of the President's Council of Economic Advisers. One very smart guy back there. And Alan believes as deeply as the president and I do about the future of the subject I want to talk about today. Look, I'm here to talk about the structure on which the entire middle class has been built. One of the cores of that structure has been manufacturing, American manufacturing. One in six American jobs, one in six, depends on our manufacturing base. And it's not just the folks who are on the factory floor. It's everyone from the engineers to the contractors, to the advertisers, to the salespersons. They're the people who have been able to generate the kinds of incomes that produce the ability to live a middle-class life, to be able to live in a decent neighborhood, own a home, send your kids to school, be in a position to take care of your parents if they're in need, and have the prospect that you'll be able to save enough you won't have to rely on your own children. That's the basic middle-class bargain that was made. But it's been broken. We have to reestablish it. And that's why I'm here at this great university. That's why I just toured the engineering department. You and your colleagues across the country are going to be part of putting tens of millions of people in America back to work in entire new industries and entire new areas, making products that you perfect it and supporting entire new industries with products we never imagined. You've -- you have -- we in the United States, though, have ground to make up. Over the past two decades, all the industrial heartland has heard about manufacturing is outsourcing. I've had the great pleasure of visiting this state since as early as coming out here with John Culver in 1974 -- or, excuse me, before that coming out. But John's campaign was '76, I guess. And I went through that period watching you when the farm economy absolutely collapsed, when literally there were farmers who were hanging themselves in their barns out of desperation. And here we are today. Here we are today. Tom never fails to remind me or the president or anyone who will listen what we already know but needs reminding for the American people, that agriculture, agriculture, leads the way. But hundreds of thousands of good-paying manufacturing jobs have been spun off. Entire factory floors have been picked up. They have been moved over the last 20 years to Mexico, to China, to Vietnam. How many times have not the students but their parents heard the phrase "outsourcing"? Outsourcing. And millions of Americans lost their job in the facility to be able to live a middle-class life. Well, I'm here to tell you the generation of students at this university are not going to hear much about outsourcing anymore. I promise you you're going to hear a word that we didn't hear the last 25 to 30 years: insourcing. Literally, insourcing. And there's a very simple reason for that. We have the most skilled workers and engineers in the entire world. Just look at what you're doing here at Iowa State. And as Tom and I were walking back from the engineering department, we talked about it's being replicated all across America. Your engineering department is teaming up with manufacturers of agricultural equipment to increase productivity. Secretary Vilsack can tell you today agriculture employs directly 1.8 million people but supports 11 million jobs. It accounts for 10% of all of our exports. So everything, everything you do here to improve the agricultural economy benefits all of America and has rippling effects. I just had a chance to visit a lab where your engineering students have been testing and refining part of an agricultural sprayer at partnership with AgLeader, a company based here, right here in Ames. The student back there explained to Tom and me that he is figuring out and improving the ability of this sprayer to do exactly what it's supposed to do, and in the process, use considerably less fertilizer and pesticides needed to help grow healthy crops. And in the process, it's improving the environment. It's lowering the cost to the farmer of producing the product, in turn lowering the cost to the consumer, and in turn spinning off whole new generation of ideas that this brilliant young mind is in the process of developing right now. AgLeader thinks these kinds of improvements could reduce the amount of fertilizer or pesticide a farmer wastes by 70%. That means 84 fewer gallons of wasted energy every single time that tractor pulls out and sprays the field. You know, that can really add up to save a great deal of money for farmers, and the innovations like that are going to make a difference in business as well. But it's not just happening in agriculture manufacturing. It's happening all across the board, all across America. The president and I just held a conference at the White House on insourcing, where the CEOs of some of the largest companies in the world, the CEOs, came to sit down with us. The CEOs of the DePong Company, the Ford Motor Company, Siemens, Masterlock, and a whole range of others. And they came to tell us about why they are coming home. They're not just building factories de novo here in the United States. They are bringing home. They are picking up factory floors in China, in Vietnam, in Mexico, and coming home. They're coming home because they have a phrase that's called "the total cost of ownership." When they build a factory, they have to build it with a life expectancy of 25 to 30 years. And they're figuring out over that period of time there is no other part of the world that can provide as much productivity and as much surety that their investment will in fact continue to repay the investment for the life of that factory. They brought along outfit called the Boston Consulting Group. They recently released a report saying that within five years, and I quote, "If you factor in shipping inventory costs and other considerations, the cost gap between sourcing in China and manufacturing in the United States is minimal." Not only that, they went on to say that if you -- if your company is partnering with Iowa State, you're not worried about protecting your intellectual property. But if you're going to do business in other parts of Asia, you're required to partner with a 50% local partner. Sign over your trade secrets. And one of the reasons they keep their R&amp;D and their innovators from the factory floor in China is they don't want them to be in China or other countries for fear of the security of that intellectual property. Businesses don't want to take that risk. All that's important, but our single greatest advantage is the reason they're coming home. And these are coming out of the mouth. If you doubt me, you can ask these CEOs. They're not coming home, and they're patriotic Americans. They're not coming home for patriotic reasons. They're coming home for concrete business reasons. And every one of them said "America has the most productive, highly skilled, innovative workers and engineers in the world." Have you wondered why countries that produce more engineers and scientists than us aren't innovating leaders of the world? How long have you all heard, particularly those of you in politics and those of you in academia? How long have you heard for the past 15 years how China and any other countries are producing two, three, four times as many engineers as the United States of America? Scientists, the list goes on. Why? Ask yourself why. Why have they not become the most innovative countries in the world? Why is there a need to steal our intellectual property? Why is there a need to have a business hand over its trade secrets, to have access to a market of a billion, 300 million people? Because they're not innovating. And you have to ask yourself why. I believe it's because in those countries, and even some of our European friends, their students are either not allowed or not trained to challenge orthodoxy. To challenge orthodoxy. As much difficulty we have with our primary and elementary schools and high schools, which we're working like the devil on, investing in heavily from the day we took office, even there, students are not afraid to challenge orthodoxy. There are no sacred cows. Innovation only occurs through challenge. Steve Jobs, who as we all know recently passed away, said many insightful things. But one of the things that stuck in my mind when I saw an interview he was doing on a college campus -- I can't remember which college campus. And he was asked by a student, "What is the single most important thing I should have in mind in order to be able to live the kind of life you've lived in terms of innovation and developing things?" He said two words: "Think different." Not differently. "Think different," he said. It's impossible to think different in a country where you can't speak freely. It's impossible to think different when you have to worry what you put on the internet will either be confiscated or you will be arrested. It's impossible to think different where orthodoxy reigns. That's why. That's why we remain the most innovative country in the world in addition to all those other things that are happening. And here at Iowa State and every university in America, you understand that change only comes through challenging. Challenging orthodoxy. Challenging the established norm. Challenging the system that you're working on in a literal and figurative sense. And that's the environment where the next generation of great ideas is going to come from. You have that kind of environment right here, where students and businesses are working together to develop skills that can revolutionize entire industries, where not only businesses are teaching students how to get engaged in the business enterprise, but they're looking with fresh eyes. They have nothing to invest in. They're unafraid to say, "Why is that doing that? Why don't you do that?" It's an invaluable, invaluable commodity. And businesses know it. That's why they come to other parts of your university and universities across America and have projects. The dean was telling me, "You have a system here where they'll actually help seniors do their projects, and they'll come in and say, 'All right, solve this problem.'" They're not doing that just to help the seniors. They're doing that because they have a problem. And they think the senior may put fresh eyes on it and be able to help them with their problem. There's a synergy in all of this that's missing in other parts of the world. I have traveled just since I've been elected Vice President of the United States, I have traveled over 540,000 miles. 540,000 miles. 30 countries, meeting with world leaders Five-hundred-and-forty-thousand miles, thirty countries, meeting with world leaders from China to Afghanistan, to the Middle East. They all know we have something that nobody else has. Take a company you know well here in Iowa, Siemens, which has a major corporate investment here in Iowa, building wind turbines and the eight-hundred-plus parts that go into those turbines. They, I met with the CEO of Siemens a month ago. He said he was, they were about to make almost a, between a quarter and a third of a billion-dollar investment in a new plant facility. And they literally scoured to build gas turbines. And they scoured the world. They at first thought they were going to go to Shanghai because of wages and infrastructure, et cetera. Then they looked at, I think it was Vancouver in Canada. They looked around the world, and you know where they ended up going? They ended up going to Charlotte, North Carolina, instead of anywhere else in the world. And when they asked why they did that, he said, "It's because it's in the middle of a university complex that's world-class, with world-class engineers, and had the ability to team up with community colleges to train workers on the complex business of building turbines by partnering with the community colleges." That's happening also all over America. And these are good-paying jobs. On that Siemens factory floor, the average salary is seventy-thousand dollars a year. Folks, I'm here to tell you, the United States is better positioned than any other country in the world to be the world's leading economic power in the twenty-first century as it was in the twentieth. Tom's an expert in a lot of things, including agriculture. I'm supposedly an expert in foreign policy. We both know, and experts, anyone from out of town with a briefcase, and neither one of us have a briefcase with us today. I have met every major world leader since nineteen-seventy-two, and I interfaced with them constantly on behalf of this country the last three years. They know it too. They know it too. I'm accused of being an optimist. If you read about me in the national press, you always not have a tagline, but it's a descriptive line about forty percent of the time saying, "Biden, the White House optimist", as if I'm the new kid in the block, as my grandfather would say, as if I just fell off the turnip truck yesterday. I've been there longer than all of them combined, unfortunately. I've been there for eight presidents. And I'm telling you, I'm not an optimist. I'm a realist. Remember, remember, those of you who are old enough, in the seventies, how Japan Incorporated was going to eat our lunch. Remember how we talked about the buying of America by Japan. They were buying the Rockefeller Building, they were buying all of America, they're buying large swaths of American agriculture and industry. They were going to bury us. Then I remember in the late eighties as a senator, and the early nineties, about the Asian tigers, Hong Kong, Singapore, South Korea, Taiwan, and how they were going to overwhelm our economic position. I'm not making this up. Remember, remember we were told that. The same people who told us that have been telling us for ten years about the inevitability of China. The President has put me in a big chunk, in charge of a big chunk of China policy. I want China to grow. I want them to grow, and I want them to go rapidly for two reasons. One, so they maintain their internal stability, which I worry a great deal about. And two, which I said to the Chinese when I spoke at the People's Great Hall of the People, so they create markets for our products. One of the best things about the China challenge is they have awakened a sleeping giant. They have awakened America and the American people. They will not dominate. We will dominate. We will remain the most productive, safest, most secure environment in the world for people to do business. And by the way, let me give you just one example, at the risk of making this longer than it should. After we were downgraded, our Treasury bills, our, excuse me, our rating was downgraded in the summer because of the ridiculous inability, anyway. We were both frustrated, it's fair to say. I immediately was on a plane heading to China because President Hu, the leader of China, and President Obama, we each delegated one person to sharpen the relationship. President Xi, Vice President Xi of China, the heir apparent to run that country, and I were supposed to establish a personal relationship. I've spent twenty hours alone with him and another seventy or eighty hours, more than that, total of ten days, traveling side by side with him in China and me with him in the United States. But when I arrived in China for that first visit, two days after we were downgraded, that's not true, seven days after we were downgraded, there had been an offering of Treasury bills. You know how the other folks say that China owns America, they hold the mortgage to our house? So I had all the, I had all the major economic press on the plane with me, the Wall Street Journal, the London, all the major economic press. And they were waiting for me to get off, they were writing stories, Biden's getting off and say to the people of China, "Mea culpa, mea culpa, mea maxima culpa, please buy our Treasury bills. We're going to be okay." Before I landed, they had the Treasury offering, and the Chinese came in and bought as many and more than they did before, after we were downgraded. And again, in that meeting with, in the People's Hall with the President and the Prime Minister and the Vice President, array of press, Chinese and American, they were very nice. They stood up and said, "Well, we know you'll come back," and like, you know, like the benevolent father, "we know you'll be okay." And it came to my to speak, and I said, "Well, I, I, you're, I'm confident, we're not only going to be okay, we are okay." And I said, "By the way, if I were you, I wouldn't buy any more American Treasury bills." Our economic staff nearly died when I said that. I said, "It's true, you own one percent of our financial instruments and seven percent of our Treasury bills. They're secure because Americans own them. And the fact that we're almost three times as large as your economy should not worry you. We're looking forward to your growth." Ladies and gentlemen, understand one thing. Notwithstanding this god-awful recession we inherited, we start from a position of considerable leverage, considerable leverage. And now you're hearing from the same skeptics and cynics who are back telling us America can't compete in creating a clean alternative, a clean alternative to energy production, that it won't create good-paying jobs. Well, I'd like them to come to Iowa, where twenty percent of your energy is from renewable sources, primarily from the wind. Tell them to go to Newton or Fort Madison, where Siemens workers are building as many as eight-thousand-eight-hundred parts of a windmill every day, making a good salary. Tell them, tell them. That's why, remind them, that's why Iowa's unemployment rate is five-point-eight percent, well below the national average. It's not only happening here in Iowa, it's happening all across America. Industries are coming back, good-paying jobs are coming back. Look at, you know, it's like that, it's like that quote of the civil rights activist Fannie Lou Hammer. She used to say, "I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired." The American people are tired, tired of being told they have to lower their expectations. They're tired of being told that they can't compete. They're tired of being told that we're not going to be the leading economy in the world. They know better. These are the same folks that told the President and me that going out and rescuing the automobile industry would be a disaster. We lost four-hundred-thousand manufacturing jobs in the eight months before we were sworn in, in the automobile industry. We've added one-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand since our program went into effect. And now we're once again the leading supplier of automobiles in the world with, with the best-made products in the world. Folks, there's more that we can do, though, to speed this process of transition up and rebooting the middle class. Some of you are baseball fans. You know the expression "pace on the ball"? We can put more pace on the ball, and that's what the President and the Secretary and I are doing. We can do it by providing permanent tax relief for research and development of companies, by giving tax breaks for companies that move back to America, not give them tax breaks to move out of America. And maybe most importantly, we can do it by investing in you, in education, by ensuring that all those, all those qualified to attend school after high school can afford to do it and not be denied it because of their inability to pay. Let me say one more thing about the same forces of doom. Those who say that in a free-market economy, there's no place for government to play a role in incentivizing innovation or investing in infrastructure, how many times have you heard that lately? The free market does not account for that. Obviously, those women and men did not do well in the one area I did well, in history courses in college. In the middle of the Civil War, Abraham Lincoln still had time to understand there was an overwhelming need to invest in America. He put in place the Homestead Act, bringing farmers west to develop a frontier and in the process, expanding our economy. He rewarded private railroad companies. For every mile of track they built in the transcontinental railroad, he paid them sixteen-thousand dollars in Treasury bonds. The transcontinental railroad would never have been built within the timeframe it was. And maybe the most important thing he did, he established land-grant universities because he knew the greatest single contribution that could be made was developing the minds and intellects of our people to enable us to compete. Tom reminded me on the way out that Iowa State, this one-hundred-and-fifty anniversary, was the first land-grant university in the nation. And the payoff has been enormous. In the past, you developed the first fax machine, the first digital computer, and now you're continuing to innovate breakthroughs in manufacturing and partnering with industry. My alma mater, my alma mater, the University of Delaware, was also a land-grant university. They've become one of the most advanced composite material research programs in the world. As I speak, they're developing new lightweight antennae for helicopters, reducing the lift drag on helicopters. For the first time, taking composite materials in line than to handle electrical charge. They partnered with NRG to develop a technology that will allow electric car owners to connect to the grid technology, buy and sell power, as they said in vividly, garnering worldwide attention because it holds the promise to transform the future of electric supply. And they spun off a company called EV2G that is now working with BMW to apply this capability that may be applicable worldwide on all automobiles, creating hundreds of thousands of new jobs in the process, once again making us the innovative leader in the world. They're partnering with Aberdeen Proving Gowns of the military. They developed a new liquid body armor that provides better protection than Kevlar, Kevlar at a much lighter weight, will save lives of police officers and soldiers all across the world. It all adds up to one simple thing. More innovation means more jobs, means American leadership. And we, as a country, have to continue to support and expand this model, notwithstanding what our friends say about the inability of government to even set goals. That's not been the story of the history of the journey of this country. The rest of the world acknowledges what you know, we know. This is still indisputable. We have the greatest research universities in the world. The Times Higher Education of London, the Times of London Higher Education said, recently wrote, it said that thirty of the world's fifty top universities are located in the United States. But there's a little secret as to why we're so impressive, our universities. It's the freedom we have to discover, the freedom to pursue new ideas, which I mentioned earlier, that allows scholars and researchers to cross-disciplinary boundaries. It's this cross-pollinization, which I saw some of in the engineering lab, Dean, with you, that leads to new discoveries that can create entire new industries. Mervyn Kelly, Chairman of the Board of Bell Labs, which was America's greatest ideas factory for about sixty-five years, he believed that freedom was critical. Scientists were encouraged to interact with engineers, walk the factory floors, develop new products, take their time. What came out of Bell Labs? The first transistor. Now they're in everything, from portable radios to computers. They made the first cellular network, and the technology that made the TV possible. This model is still working today. Today, there's a guy named Eric Lander, who's one of the President's top science advisors and a leading researcher in molecular biology, who approves the wisdom of this approach. He started out as a mathematician. He became a laboratory scientist. He's just one example, the most important discoveries in genetics today are coming from collaborations between biologists, mathematicians, chemists, and computer scientists. I remember the guy who did the human genome system at a conference where there were seven Nobel laureates in Arizona several years ago. And these, these guys were going through, these, these guys with their doctorates in the human genome process, and then mapped the human genome. They said the only reason they were able to do it is because they collaborated with computer engineers, because they could never have tested. They're now talking about getting to a hundred, to a trillion, a trillion interactions per second on computers. Bell Labs may not be around anymore, but today, the idea factories of America research are universities like the University of Iowa. You have a close connections to the cutting-edge private businesses and government labs, and there are frequent exchanges of researchers and students across the fields of education. I witnessed firsthand today touring your lab, the type of cross-pollinization that leads to new inventions. These are the kinds of innovations that will foster whole new industries, from renewable energy to better seed technology for farmers, to entire new breakthroughs in molecular biology. And that's how we're going to create good middle-class jobs. That's how America's coming back. And it's thanks to all of you here. You're bringing us back, and we intend to stay with this. We intend to stay with this model of investing, investing heavily in research, development, education, and the cross-pollinization of disciplines, combined with access for American businesses to what you are producing and the students you're producing. I got elected when I was twenty-nine years old. I was elected to the United States Senate. They called me a young idealist then. I must tell you with all honesty, and apparently the press has been writing this for a long time, and they think it's crazy, I give you my word as a Biden, I'm more optimistic about the prospects of the United States of America today than when I was a twenty-nine-year-old kid joining the Senate. More optimistic. There's nothing, nothing, nothing that can stop this country, as long as we give the American people an even chance, just an even chance, to get an education. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the work you're doing here. You students, when you're winning the Nobel Prize, remember me when I introduce you to my grandkids. Don't say, "Joe who." Ladies and gentlemen, God bless you all, and most of all, may God protect our troops. Thank you for listening.